In order please, gentlemen. Uh, roll call, Mrs. Slump.
Dr. Portolino?
Here.
Mr. Dodgtry?
Here.
Dr. Mondrak?
Here.
Mr. Morella?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Rappaport?
Here.
Ms. Upferman? Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Grau?
Here.
Mr. Ammer?
Here.
Mr. Owen?
Here.
Live show, please, ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, and omnipotent.
Sun, channel, Mr. Slump.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of all bodies and which business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Montfort Township Board of Education provided a notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Montfort Township Municipal Building, all Montfort Township Public Schools, Montfort Public Library, the Montfort Old Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the board's official newspaper, on January 11, 2019.
Thank you. The first order of business is actually here from our students rep. Um, Malik, you're going to start us off for a minute. What's your thought on that?
I'll start off.
Okay.
Um, during the month of April, our spring sports teams have been on a tear. Starting off with our baseball team, they have won nine straight on the guidance of Coach Swindell, and are moving on to the county semifinals against rival Delaware. The boys' cross team is in a bit of a skid, losing the last three games, but with the county going, a county game going on as we speak, we expect them to be back in the win column. The girls' cross team is doing spectacular right now, thanks to sophomore sensation Madeline Kelly, who has been racking up the goals at the lake. The girls' softball team has also been successful, and a big congratulations goes out to Gianna Palazzano for her 100th career hit. The track and field team has also been tremendous, with recent records broken by Danny Vito in Chaplin and Zion Lu in Long John. Boys' tennis has solidified their top spot in counties with another win over the weekend pulling their strong record of nine and four. As county tournaments are finishing up and state tournaments are starting, we wish all teams good luck.
Good evening. Um, so, uh, this last month for, um, I guess the entire high school's been pretty big. We've had like multiple field trips, um, including one very recently, the criminology class that we have at our school. They did a, like, um, a presentation on how like, um, the K-9 dogs are trained and like how they like search and like, um, find drugs and like, I guess, like take people down. Um, our Earth Club, um, also had a field trip. I'm not sure what that was, um, about, but it was, they did something interesting. Um, our DECA group, um, sent four people, including Sebastian Rocklor, um, Reese Henderson, Ethan Horwitz, and Samantha Pollan. Um, they're currently, uh, they're near Disney actually right now, and I'm not sure how they've done yet, but that will figure out soon. Um, so for our seniors, this, um, this time, a lot is going on. We just, um, finished our, like, early bird prom ticket sales, and basically that's just, um, like a small discount for if you need your prom ticket stuff early. And, um, recently, we had our, uh, school Broadway night, and that was, um, a bunch of students selecting a Broadway song to sing, and, um, they all did very well. And, um, the one act for the, uh, drama club is also coming up, and I talked a little bit about that last time. It's kind of like a, uh, you just pick a scene from a show or some, um, like SNL skit, and you can show your colors to everybody. And, um, there, another, uh, field trip that we had was the, uh, music department. They went to the University of Delaware to perform, and, uh, it went very well, and they were very impressed with, uh, our students. And that's pretty much it for this past month.
That's it? Any questions from our colleagues? All right, now, there's a number thirty-six. You know what that's about? Thirty-six, on your, I too, on your age, you're thirty-six. Thirty-six is, I mean, what do you have to graduation? Not to your family, though.
I'm not, I'm not counting it down.
It's a big test. I'm going to answer that next month, too. But I hope I'm accurate.
I'm trying to save it. I'm trying to save it.
I don't count any debts or nothing. I sign all the exact counts.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Pleasure having you with us again. Enjoy the evening. Roll call, Mr. Slump.
I did note in the agenda, once again, uh, Montfort Township has been awarded the Best Communities for Music Education, uh, honor. This is the fourth consecutive year, and really is a testament to the wonderful work that our music teachers do across the district. We have also noted the six students that, uh, received either first, second, or third place in the Arbor Day Poster Competition last Friday. Those students were honored at a celebration, a tree planting celebration at Town Hall. It was a very lovely event. Uh, and I did provide copies, uh, from the board this evening of the book that was, uh, published earlier this month. It's filled with student writing on a variety of character education topics. Um, probably, I think, close to a hundred, 125 students actually participated. Every student that submitted something is included in the book, and we are going to have a celebration and a, uh, an opportunity, uh, for you to get the autographs of our authors. That will be on Tuesday, May 28, at the High School Media Center, from 3:30 to 5:00. Uh, so I would invite you to come and, um, meet the authors at that time. And that, can you turn it off?
Thank you. Just going back to the one on the news. Uh, and I agree, this is quite a achievement, this fourteen-year role in the tech department, and I feel very proud of the opportunity to play that. And, uh, very welcome, not to be late, ladies and gentlemen.
And lots of concerts coming up over the next several weeks, so an opportunity to see our students in action.
Very good. We have quite a few, um, pre-mus articles on the agenda. We also have, this time, uh, presentation of the budget. Our new president, Mrs. Slump, is the new president. And we have dropped adopted the tender budget on April 2nd. That was initially through County Office for approval, review. That has been completed. And tonight is the formal public hearing about some final budgets for next year. Uh, we go to the preliminary, county, on April 2nd, and we hear a notice, county, on January 2nd, of the budget. Mrs. Slump?
I thank you all for coming out to hear the board's presentation on its plans for the 2019-20 school year. The school budget... School budget.
Is it on?
It's not working, it's just... Uh, the, the annual school budget is the financial presentation of the board's goals and district's objectives. So, as the board and the administration puts together the school budget, they are considering the board's goals for the following year, as well as the academic expectations for the district. By state statute, the school budget is required to be a balanced budget, meaning that all the costs that the district are going to incur have to be covered by resources that are available to the district. In order to do this, they need to be proposing programs that have been developed, not only to be effective for the students who are receiving them, but also to be efficient. So as the process occurs, which began in November of last year, we are constantly trying to improve programs in order so that we can offer the most amount of programs within the restrictions of the resources that we have. The budget can be grouped together into light-kind expenses, expenses that are related to each other, and we're going to look at the budget in those different groupings. The first grouping is the instructional area. This would include any of the costs that occur in a regular classroom, those services that are provided to students with special needs, basic skills, and bilingual programs, co-curricular events, which are events that occur outside of the normal school day, such as the yearbook, DECA, FELA are all examples, the athletic programs that are offered at the high school, and then students who are placed out in the district, and in, because we are not able to educate their needs within the district. Well, you notice, as you look at the trend analysis over the last few years, is that we have been very tight in the growth of this area, and that's due to the fact that we've been working very diligently to provide very lean programs that meet the needs of our students. The increase that you know is due to program changes that we propose for the 2019-20 school year.
So the first of those changes is the addition of three elementary teaching positions, and that is a function of enrollment. The district does have a policy on class size, and when the class size reaches a certain point, we add an extra section. So we have a need for additional teachers, uh, one at Cedar Hill and two at Hilldale at the elementary level next year. We will also be adding an additional resource room teacher at Lazar. We will be continuing our one-book-one-to-one initiative. Um, that seems to have been, uh, really been a wonderful addition to the instructional process, uh, at the middle and high school levels. We are also going to be working very closely with Austin Thompson, our Director of Technology, to enhance our, uh, prevention strategies with regard to cyber threats. I mean, a number of districts have been hit, um, so we're working with them to, uh, enhance our, our security there. And we are going to continue to provide the opportunity for the students at the high school to take the PSAT, uh, during, during the school day. Uh, we find that this is, um, a great way for them to prepare for the SAT. Uh, we do have some staffing reductions, uh, in the area of, uh, folks who work with our special needs population. Those numbers are driven by our IUPs and the actual recommendations that are included in those documents for the, the students.
Based on the size of the instructional budget, it represents over 50% when we include the benefits that are tied to the teachers. So more than half of the money that's being raised is being applied directly in the classroom. The next area is the area of support services. These two are, are areas that affect the students directly, however, they are areas that support the educational program in, in the classrooms. They would include things like your nurses, your related services such as OT, PT, speech, extraordinary services such as 120s, the child study team, guidance, media, and the development and training of the curriculum and the teachers. With this, and added to the 49%, that's related to the instructional area, this is an additional 12%. So collectively, that 62% is going directly to the students. And again, as you look at the trend analysis, we are again applying very lean standards while also trying to make improvements to the program. So the increase that you see into the 19-20 school year relates to program changes.
So some of those changes are, uh, in relation to, uh, the actual needs for vocational, uh, program support for students with special needs, and we will also be continuing to fund programs that address student anxiety and stress. That stems from our four-year involvement with climate, climate and culture studies, and the outcome of the end of the program survey that heard last spring, uh, continues to be an area that really demands our attention and our focus. And again, um, in, in terms of support services, we also see some reduction in staffing due to, uh, changes in individual student IUPs and the need for, uh, specific personnel.
The next area is the area of administration and benefits. This would be the area of the general administration of the district, such as the superintendent's office, the board of education, the administration of each of the school buildings, the area of the business office, and the technology department. This particular area has gone down due to the fact that we have variances from legal costs that will not be reoccurring. Unfortunately, what you do see in the trending on the benefits is that each year, those numbers increase. Uh, we do shop for different medical insurance plans related to the population of the employees, however, medical costs have been going up. In total, this represents about 17% in terms of health benefits, and that definitely has an impact when the amounts are increasing. The last area of the budget is the area of buildings and operations. This would include areas such as maintenance and custodial services, the maintaining of our buildings, and the cleaning of our buildings, security services, transportation, food, and then equipment and improvements to our buildings. This year, we will continue a second year with the Student Resource Officer that we have included in the budget for the 18-19 year. They're going to continue into 19-20, and in addition to that, the Class Three Officer. Those officers have been working in all of the different buildings, however, are primarily housed at the high school. The strong decrease that you see in this area relates to just the process of doing improvements to the building, or in the process of implementing the changes that were approved in the 2017 referendum, and those projects going forward mean that less money from the general budget is being put towards building improvements. As those projects are completed, this picture will change a little bit as we then begin to go back into the regular budget to finish up other projects that are now part of that referendum. When you look at all of those areas collectively, what you have is a budget for the General Operating Fund for the 2019-20 school year, that is $77.7 million. That is a 0.81% increase over the current year. So we have included a lot of items into the budget to improve programming at a very, very small increase overall. As I had mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, the revenues from resources that we have available to us have to be sufficient in order for us to cover the costs of that $77.7 million. The way those resources break down is they break down into three different sources. Those that are raised locally, those that are raised through the state, and those that are raised either through the federal government or through our, the use of our own savings. The largest of the providers is the tax base, and that is located under the local sources. Included in the sources of the board are also monies from the state for various types of categorical aid, and the savings relates to monies that the board puts forward. As seen, the $77.7 million in expenditures are able to be covered from the resources the board has available to them, where the revenues also equal that same amount. There are two other areas of the budget that are included in our presentation. That includes items that are given to us from various sources as grants or as contributions, donations, donations from local sources, and grants from state and federal sources. The largest of those are from the federal sources, and they relate to things like the IDEA and the No Child Left Behind grants that are given through the federal government. Second area that's included here are, is the area of debt service. Debt service, after the referendum has been passed, we then have to pay off the bonds that were issued in, to, that were issued in order to fund the program. We now have to pay them off. That's done through the debt service fund, and payments from there are made in principal and interest payments. The increases that you're seeing relate to the fact that the 2017 referendum is now beginning to get paid back. Interest payments are being made. However, we had received $653,000 in state aid. When we were doing a presentation for the referendum, we spoke about the fact that the state would be covering 40% of the total cost. That 40% is being collected in debt service aid, and it's beginning, that what we're seeing is it's coming on to the rolls now as the project now continues. Additionally, we then added an additional amount into appropriated fund balance to help offset the effect of the taxes. As a result, on an assessed house of $528,000, the tax increase for the 2019-20 year related to the, this budget, the board of education's budget for that period, is $104, which is an increase of 1.26 over the current year.
Thank you very much, Dr. Roll Car, Mrs. Slump. Glad to be yours, gentlemen, until the end of the presentation. Just on that last slide, and seeing how the taxing back, that's an average increase of $104 on a home assessed at $528. Naturally, the assessment is a lot less than your home is worth, so sometimes people say, gee, I thought my house was worth 7, 800. Well, it may be, but this is the assessed valuation which you get from the county when you're in my debt. Thank you very much. Uh, now let him entertain any questions or important that he will have, and we're now opening to the public. I would like to thank all administrative team, especially the ladies to my left and right, for the time and effort they've been. I'd also like to thank the finance committee, Chair Val Karen, and the members of that committee who I met on several occasions to review this budget, expenditures, and the revenue. And I would now open it up to the public for any questions that they may have on the school budget for next year. Okay, I would now entertain a motion to close the public hearing. You have a motion, please?
So.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. We now move on with the agenda, please. We have the committee reports. We'll start, as we always do, with the finance. Karen?
No report.
Karen, I know we haven't met since last, but we had a meeting before that, obviously. Curriculum instruction, Mike?
No report for all meetings coming next month.
All right, policy of personnel, Mr. Morella?
Nothing.
Um, Casey's down?
No.
Security, John?
Nothing. Actually, uh, in reference to that, to make you aware, the cops program from the US DOJ just came out of the school violence prevention program. It's a 75%. Now, it does not have to be done through police departments, it can be done through the schools. Um, and, uh, there's a variety of things that we will talk about.
Chair, that'll be great. Thank you, John. Uh, delegates, uh, school boards, Karen?
Um, yes, thank you. Thank, thank, yes. Um, first, I'll report on, uh, New Jersey School Boards Association Resolution Subcommittee Met, April 13, and one resolution is being moved forward for vote at the May 18 Delegate Assembly, and this resolution, uh, has to do with maintaining school aid, state school aid at firm levels. Um, basically, it, the, uh, the resolve clauses, uh, read that New Jersey School Board believes in fair, ethical, and equitable weapons. They date based upon those recent enrollment and financial data and sitting adjustments to ensure funding under the statutory formula, and that no school district, no student should experience hardship as a result of reductions or other adjustments in state funding. And the, uh, next clause reads that New Jersey School Boards believes that the state's school funding formula should address the financial needs of school districts in which exceptional circumstances involving the community's tax base prevent the calculation of apparent aggregate local contributions to the education program. Um, the resolution will be presented at the Delegate Assembly on May 18, and, um, there's usually a couple of resolutions, uh, this is the only one that I submitted. Um, and, um, as the delegate, I would be attending, and my plan was to vote yes on this resolution unless, after we have time, you disagree, um, you can speak to me. Um, it should be a full board consensus on that on the vote. Um, the other thing that's happening, um, on, at the May 18 Delegate Assembly, and the Delegate Assembly is a twice-a-year meeting where New Jersey School Boards conducts business, um, uh, as well as passes resolutions, gives financial reports, is there will be, um, a swearing-in of the new officers, and, um, as one of the new officers that will be sworn into the position of Vice President for Legislation and Resolutions, um, it would mean a lot to me for, um, as many of my colleagues that can attend, if you would attend, um, it would be my pleasure to see you there, um, and that's on May 18, and it's, um, it's in Mercer County. And that can be my report for New Jersey School Boards.
Thank you, Karen. And congratulations, even though some of us may not be there, so I'm hopefully be there on your vice presidency for legislative, um...
Resolution.
It was the first time I ever had it, but it's a long one. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Uh, Mike? With Norris County, I have another meeting coming up.
Yes, did you say, the meeting is the 23rd, right?
The county meeting.
The county is the 23rd.
The 23rd coming up in a few weeks.
Okay, um, Educational Services, John?
Nothing to report, we need, uh, actually.
Okay. River awareness, Mike?
Uh, nothing to report right now.
And the Mustangs, and, and...
They're being promoted at 7 o'clock, and there's a lot of events coming up with the Mustangs.
Just the microphone, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. There, there are a lot of events coming up, uh, this spring, uh, with the Mustangs. They just published a, uh, they're just publishing a list of the, uh, events where the Mustangs are willing to be, have the shack open, serve the food and so on, and they are looking for, uh, people who want to help out with this. There's a whole list, like county events, you know, athletic events that, where's, where the host for, where is it, uh, to serve food and so on, and those events.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, any letters on report from the elementary? Okay. Public participation is an opportunity for any member of the public to like to speak on anything on the agenda. Okay. I would then entertain a motion to consent resolution, please.
So.
Second.
Are any questions on the minutes? I agree, administration, K, finance, facilities, L, personnel, M, or on the air, curriculum instruction, technology, and I think that, uh, we do have M2N for the libel and apology no action, however. All right, we have the roll call, Mrs. Slump on the items, two, M.
Mr. Morella?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Coralina?
Uh, yes, excepted staying on M1, number 27, and number 30.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes.
Dr. Woodrack?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
We're not going in closed session, so I just go to section B. Any O business before the board? General Board comment, I'd like to start that by indicating that last Friday, there was a Hall of Fame dinner for prior employees, kids from the high school, coaches, teachers, and one of our own, Michael O'Brien, who isn't a Hall of Fame, also was the MC and did a lot of the bonding with that. And I must say that he really did a great job and I was very impressed and I was proud to say that I was his colleague and his friend. And again, Mike, I thank you for your efforts and that we have. Some of us also attended Little League parade. It seemed to be getting smaller and smaller every year, I'm listening, but it was a very nice day, a little chilly, but we made it. Public participation is an opportunity for any member of the public to bring anything before the board that's not on the agenda. If you would like to make a comment or something, just come to the microphone, tell us who you are, where you live, and we'll be able to hopefully answer your question. Not all at once now. Can you help with that, Daisy?
I think it's on, I think you just need to speak directly to it.
Speak into it loudly. Mark, can you help?
I think it's broken.
Can you take the owner of the telephone release?
Yeah.
You heard the kids, right?
Hello?
Hello.
My name is Mary Ann Pelleray. I have a question. My address, 30 Forest Place in Toa'aka. I have a question and I hope it's the right place, the right time to ask my question. It's about the possibility to receive a French student in the high school. I already contacted Dr. Erwin Duhar and I think the Board of Education and it was a negative answer. And I would like to give a little more information and say it was not a new policy that I would like to replace or whatever, it was just a personal request. And I would like to know if you could probably consider, I've written a letter for the Board of Education, Renee Bopar, and I don't want to waste your time and the time of everyone.
And there was no background, right?
It has been the district's practice for quite some time not to accept exchange students.
And it's been discussed quite often in the board.
Right. So I mean, we'd be happy to review your correspondence and respond to you certainly.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Why don't you sit down and discuss, Mike?
Hi, Erin Alkey, Erin of Silver Cloud, come up. I'm here to discuss the decorating of the cars for, as Woods knows, maybe first at committed Students Day and the fact that we now not only have our home students that parents that they can't decorate their car, but now we're telling the students that they can't, they shouldn't be decorating their car at home and family at the school. I respectfully disagree with the two points regarding security and gangs. There's a lot of stress in my school on multiple levels. I mean, we have the induction to the National Honor Society, our AP exams. We have seniors who've worked really hard at sports, who will be varsity, and then have their varsity team. This is a day that signifies the end of the beginning for a lot of students. It's the end of their high school career. It's a day of happiness and joy. Whether or not they're going to college or not, they're moving on. They've accomplished graduate from high school. Some kids just decorated balloons that said happy graduation. It was a time that the, I think, the parents embraced a form community. You had students who were happy, you had parents who were happy. And now we've changed that and I disagree with that, that's what I was going to say. But I'm really concerned the fact that we're telling people what to do with their cars at home before they drive to school. I just don't think that's right and I just want to voice my opinion about that.
I just want to clarify that we did not tell people that they could not decorate their cars at home. The new notice that just came out says that. Okay, I mean, that's certainly, I know Mr. Sandberg was going to put out, I think our message was to emphasize that parents should not come on school property to decorate cars. We have no control over decorating cars at home as long as the cars can be safely driven to school. I mean, we can't control that. It says, let me find it. We were strongly urging students and parents to not decorate student vehicles, let's say, at home or at school. Well, I think the intent was to, to refer back to the original correspondence that went out at the beginning of April where we clearly said that we do not want parents coming on school property to decorate cars. And I understand that you're saying this.
That's what I'm saying.
Sorry. And I think the reason Mr. Sandberg sent out an additional message this evening is, my understanding, over the last couple of days, there had been some postings on social media indicating that the district had reversed its position and we wanted to clarify that we haven't reversed our position. It is still our desire not to have parents come on school property to decorate cars. We, you know, there are other times, whether it's for sporting events or whatever, that cars are decorated. If they're decorated at home, we have no control over that as long as they can safely be driven. So what we mean by safely driven, that the driver's visibility is not impaired and that there is nothing attached to the car that could potentially come off and present a hazard for the driver that might be following in another life.
This was discussed, I guess, since the beginning of April. I think the PPA, that was the PPA.
It was discussed at the high school PDC meeting.
High school PDC meeting. I know that the PDC was in support of the leadership. Board of Education supports the high school principal and superintendent in this endeavor. They're giving an opportunity, you want to decorate the car, you can do it at home that evening, the evening before, or the morning, no, but we do not want you to come in on the school property decorating at that time. I know some people don't like that approach, some people do like the approach. Unfortunately, that's the way it stands for tomorrow. So if your sister's coming tomorrow and you have a senior, you can decorate the car tonight, or you can decorate it 6:30 in March before they leave for school, but that's the way we handle it and we think it can publicize enough with all of the parents and we think this is the right approach and the board unanimously supports the administration in this endeavor.
Thank you. I would just say that it really isn't clear in the new email that came out and I think you're going to have a lot of parents interpreting that they can't decorate it at home.
Well, you've got a couple hours in your, it's pig black, in the home, so I decorate.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Anybody else before we adjourn? All right, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Could I add one comment? Just before we adjourn, probably you're the same thing. And I thought this was jokingly because of the book that is up here that was, you know, packaged on the desk today. My colleague jokingly said to Dr. Roykard, you haven't had a chance to sleep. She said she does, okay? And I just want to say this, we're getting through a time of year that's incredibly busy. And I just hear a bunch of recent nation. And I just want to say that from top to bottom, with all the things that go on in this district, I'd like to say to all the administration, I really don't know sometimes how anyone can get any sleep with all the amount of work they're doing. That's for the business administrator and her, the people who work on her, for the superintendent's office, for all the principals, for all the events that they have to go through at the end of year. I really think that the entire administration teaches that, of course, yes, but the entire administration really deserves accolades for all the things they do throughout the year, especially at a time like this. I really do.
I would suggest that we put that in the minutes, Mrs. Slump. There might be nothing making. And I think, whoever they could ask that. Anything else? I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Remember, the next meeting is May 14th. No vote, Karen?
So.